Please have your attention. Could everyone please take their seat? I have a public service announcement. In case of an emergency, could everyone please exit the chamber to allow for our personnel, uh, emergency personnel to enter? And could you please silence your cell phones? And we have the men's and women's room out this left side door, to the right for the women, to the left for the men. Thank you very much. Anyone wishing to speak at the public speaking portion of the, this council meeting, please sign up at the podium there. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Seven thirty-five. Everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please have a roll call.
Alderman Coop?
Here.
Alderman Scott Childress?
Here.
Alderman Dawson?
Here.
Alderman David?
Here.
Here.
And Shabbitt?
Yeah.
Alderman Brown?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. I have a motion spent with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting and approved same.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Minutes are approved. Nine zero. Can I get a motion spent with the reading of the general bills?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. It's adopted. Nine zero. We now enter into the public speaking portion of the meeting. Council has set aside a thirty-minute allotment time for this purpose. Please give your name and address at the podium and direct all your comments to the council chair for the Alderman cannot engage in any debate. Thank you very much. First speaker, please.
Gloria Wasland.
Mr. President. Mr. President?
Who is saying that?
Doug.
Oh, Doug Alderman Coop?
If I may, Mr. President, could I ask, we have a special moment of science and recognition for the aircraft from Stewart Airport that went, that, that Air National Guard went down with the loss of about fifteen Marines, many that were stationed at Stewart Airport.
Absolutely. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Please stand. Thank you. Please be seated.
Thank you.
(Inaudible).
I didn't hear anything about it. Oh, that doesn't seem to be on. Eleven?
And why we wait? Just try to keep your comments to three minutes because we have eleven speakers signed up. Three times eleven, thirty-three minutes. It's not working? We're good.
We're good. We're good.
We're not good.
Okay, thank you. This is for everybody. I, man, on the, I would like pretty much to voice my naming the Plaza, the Pauline Oliveras Plaza. She's contribute, continues to contribute a lot worldwide. Thank you. On the other issue, I wanted to address Landmark Place. I'm reminded of two things. One is President Lyndon Baines Johnson, who when he was not a president, represented his people with the voice that they wanted him to represent them with. And that was now considered very racist, but it was separatist and white. And he did a good job in representing his people, and that was what he was voted into office to do. And when he became president on the heels of a more progressive president, John F. Kennedy, he basically said to his former constituents, "I am now a president of the entire United States of America." That means all of the citizens. And that means that we need to have unified rules, regulations, and rights for all of our citizens. And I remember watching as armed military escorted a young girl to a formerly segregated white school. And I thought at the same time that that was a proud moment and how brave she was, what a pitiful moment that was, that it had to be, that a girl had armed military escort. And one of the things that I really like about Kingston is that our mayor has called it One Kingston, that there is an ecology of a community that's beyond a few blocks. It encompasses the entire Kingston. Kingston is the only city in this county. And it's a very vibrant arts and cultural and progressive city that has been courageous to talk about becoming a sanctuary city and standing by all of its citizens. So my thought here is that there's a solution to everything, and that the concept of being able to house people fifty-five years and older who are on a socioeconomic level that is not their choosing, that there are military veterans who have given a lot for their country, and that we need to take care of all of our citizens in Kingston, and not look necessarily at a microcosm of what a few people want, but what does the whole community benefit from? And I believe that overall, we benefit by the rising tide of uplifting everybody. I'll make one other comment. Martin Luther King said something, no matter what he said, it was the same thing, which was that the dream and the vision for this country and for the world is peace, harmony, and to do the right thing by all of our brothers and sisters, and not to separate people by socioeconomic, race, physical disability, mental disability, or anything. We are all one community. And I stand by the Landmark Project, and I will offer whatever ideas to anybody who opposes it that might offer solutions. But I think this is an opportunity for us to work together as a community to create harmony rather than separation. Thank you. There is a solution. Let's find it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Lynda Marston Reed.
Thank you. Greetings to all of the Common Council members. I live at forty-one Emmerich Street in Midtown. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Resolution Number One Twenty-two that's on the agenda tonight, which is to change the name of the Green Space on Broadway to Deep Listening Plaza in honor of Pauline Oliveras. For any of you that didn't know her, she, she would be thrilled because she was, she may have been a world-famous sound artist, but she had the most humble heart, and her beginnings started in Midtown. So this would be a very meaningful gesture, and I am one hundred percent in, in honor of this. So, thank you for hearing tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. My name is Ellen DeFalco. I live at sixty-six Glen Street in the city. Council President Alderman, members of the press, and the public. Inquiring minds might want to know that attorney-client privilege is an American legal concept that protects certain communications between a client and his or her attorney, and prevents the attorney from being compelled to testify to those communications in court. I have witnessed all too often that this council goes into executive session for attorney-client privilege when this reason is not on the list provided by the Committee on Open Government. Additionally, to close a meeting, the law requires that a public body takes several procedural steps. First, a motion must be made during an open meeting to go into executive session. Second, the motion must identify the general area of the subject to be considered. And third, the motion must be carried by a majority vote of the total membership of a public body. When I revisited the current video of last night's caucus, thank you Clark Richter, I did not hear the reason for entering into executive session other than the questions will be answered during attorney-client privilege. This is not one of the eight legitimate purposes to go into executive session. Why discuss this behind closed doors when this matter has been presented during previous finance meetings? Why the secrecy? May I also point out that when a public body is discussing public monies, like the bond resolutions, One Twenty-seven and One Twenty-eight, to the tune of one point one million dollars, the discussion should be held in a pub, public, open forum. The residents of this city expect nothing less when this administration has professed from day one that they will practice transparency and open government. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I'm James B. Childs. I am resident at three forty-two Law &amp; Court in Kingston, New York. I'm a lifelong resident and can be proud to say that my children are fourth-generation Kingstonians. And I think that means something from the standpoint that we as a city saw it fit to erect something that none of us were here to actually build when the Alms House was actually initially thought about. It was because those that are our forefathers and those that were voting there saw the need to be able to take care of those that may not be able to take care of themselves as well. The measure of any society, any nation, is based on how you take care of those that are helpless, those that are elderly, those that cannot fend for themselves as well. And while I understand fiscal commitments, while I understand the viability of an economy, I, I implore you as, as those that are leading our city, Aldermen, Alderwomen that are here, each of you, I ask you to, to take a look and think about those that are not as fortunate, and not to look at this as being something else that someone else can do, but something that we can take a hold of the opportunity in order to be able to put into play area, an arena that would allow elderly, without those that are in need of supportive housing, those that need affordable housing, that are elderly, to be there. In fact, some of us, as we sit here, if not for affordable housing, we would not be here today. If not for affordable housing, our parents, even now, our grandparents, even now, would not be supported, would not have a nice place to live. I'm very much in support of Landmark Place. As pastor of a church that's eighty-four years old in the city of Kingston, one who is continuously giving out to people, we, we fully support this, this particular project, and we do know that it can really go far to be able to help our community. And I don't want to be, I don't want to be guilty of saying that someone else is going to do something when, when we can do it. And so I implore each of you, as you think about your decisions, more than just your constituency, as was said earlier, do think about the city of Kingston and what can really happen as we make the decision. And I do again encourage you to make the right decision as we look at the rezoning for Landmark Place.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Jean Jacobs. I live at one thirty-nine Wall Street, Kingston, New York. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Common Council, my community, and the media. I stand before you once again in opposition to the Landmark Project. I am not here this evening to attack anyone personally. As I have said in the past, that is not my MO. I am here to stand behind the citizens of Kingston, and as well, every member of this council, elected by the people, should be listening to the people. You have a fiduciary responsibility to your taxpayers, to your residents, and the citizens of our community, and beyond, Ulster County. So I urge you this evening to consider all of the effects that you will be responsible for when you make this vote. The safety and the quality of life for citizens in this city is paramount. It affects the decision you're going to make this evening. The neighborhood, the population of people that will be entering into the Alms House, I have grave concerns about the variety and what the outcome could be because I worked with the federal government and the state for years. I've been in an administrative position for over thirty-eight years, so I have worked with the top dogs. And I know that governance and management is critical to the success of this, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I'm concerned about the affordability of how we are, what about me? I'm a senior. I've worked all these years. I've raised four children, and I am a success story, but it was hard, my husband and I. So I implore you this evening to consider your vote and vote this down. Thank you for your time. Good evening.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Richard Frommuth. I'm the founder of R&amp;F Handmade Paints in Kingston. I'm also a resident in the Rondow, and I am also on the executive board of the, of the Kingston, of Midtown Arts District. You know, the, the Arts District represented a new beginning here in the, in, in Kingston, and, and it's, and it recognizes, and recognizing it, the arts as an engine for the economy of Kingston is very important. Tonight, I'm here to speak in favor of the renaming of Broadway Commons for, to the Deep Listening Space in honor of Pauline Oliveras, because in a sense, it's another beginning of, of, or a further, or furtherance, I should say, of that beginning, to, to, to honor the artists who are in, in the city, who have contributed greatly to the city, to its recognition, to its renown, because that all plays into the economic importance that the arts represent for the city. It, it plays into the fact that it makes the city more attractive. It makes the, the, it makes Broadway Commons more attractive. It gives it space for, it represents a space for people to, to congregate, to, to, and, and it also makes the property more valuable for development. And so, all of these things are represented in honoring one of the great citizens of our city, and I hope that you will, that you will pass that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. Good evening, Council people. My name is Bryant Drew Andrews. I'm the executive director of a nonprofit in Midtown Kingston and Beacon, New York. I'm also a homeowner of nineteen Van Gaspie Street in Ward Seven. Now, when I moved to Kingston, I moved my family to Kingston, I raised my children, I built a business here about twenty minutes, twenty years ago, and with the hope of helping to build strong community, a strong and supportive community. I love and respect my community and the people in it. And for over twenty years, I've taught our youth within the community to respect self, respect others, and respect their community. I was blessed with a gift to enrich our youth and adults in this beautiful city that we live in. And to whom much is given, much will be required. And I feel that whether it's money or just skill and gifts, we're all required to give that to the growth and development of our community. So within Ward Six and across the street is Ward Seven, we have a beautiful jewel. And that building, its original purpose was to serve the poor. I came personally from nothing in Brooklyn, New York, in Staten Island, and Manhattan. I came from nothing, and there was community there to support that. I, I, I work at that being the life that I live and that I help, and I hope that I, in, in, in terms of what I'm willing to give young people and our adults in the community, draw that type of support. We can lead as a great model to other communities and cities across this country to support more growth and support for the people within our community who does not have the things that we were blessed to have. RUPCO, at this point in time, are the servers of, or the holders, I should say, of chips. And they and we require things like transparency, accountability, and integrity. And to respect our community, the residents in our community, they are, should and will be held responsible to that, and I feel that with their track record and their reputation, they will and can be. So I trust that this project will come to fruition and further beautify the city and within our culture and economic growth and prosperity to those who choose to move here and live in Kingston. I support the zoning change, which is what I think this day is supposed to be about. I support the zoning change because it will help to support people like me and people within Kingston, the way Kingston supported me twenty years ago. Let's not forget to have compassion for our veterans and our seniors that live within this beautiful city of ours. I support RUPCO and their work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Council members. I'm Ann Bailey, Bailey Pottery Equipment, sixty-two Tenbrook Avenue. I'm happy to say I've been in the Midtown for thirty-five years and proud of it. This is a very exciting time for Kingston. It was about six years ago, we went into conversation about an arts commission, and one of those instrumental people in that discussion was Pauline Oliveras. She inspired many of the younger people in the group to really step up and know how important art was to all of us, to our development, to our community, for our self-reflection. And she was world-renowned, and yet she managed to come to almost every meeting and spend time with us and guide us. So the next generation that's coming up, we have a lot to thank Pauline for. So I'm here in support of Resolution One Twenty-two, of the renaming of Broadway Commons, that portion of Broadway Commons in the front, the Pauline Oliveras Deep Listening Space. Many of us really recognize the importance of Pauline to Kingston, and we hope you will take this into consideration as we become the vibrant, cultural, arts, compassionate city that we are. And I believe, in fact, we are a model of good behavior. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Laura Nordstrom. I live at eleven Hand Ready Street in downtown Kingston. I have been a homeowner for two years. I'm gonna start by saying a quote from John Holmes, "There is no better exercise for the heart than reaching down and lifting people up." I say this now because I cannot help but think that those opposed to the Landmark Project that RUPCO has have weak hearts. It sticks with me in my mind that early on in this discussion of the Alms House, an opponent was quoted as saying that homeless veterans probably have other mental issues going on, and we don't need those types in our community. To be against this project is to be against helping people, and most importantly, against helping the most vulnerable population of all, homeless, veterans, seniors, some of which may be physically disabled, mentally disabled to various degrees, or have a mental illness. I wonder if this distaste for those people in your neighborhood is because of what you picture when you hear these words. Look at me. I'm a homeowner. I'm a wife. I'm a mother. I'm a person who has dedicated my ten-year career in the community of Kingston to helping others in nonprofits. I spent seven years at Boys and Girls Club dealing with children who are amazing, and their parents, and listening to them and the struggles that they've gone through and the successes that they've had. They are not just the situation that you perceive. I spent three years working at RUPCO as the Family Self-Sufficiency Coordinator. That means I helped people lift themselves out of their situation to do better, many of which got off of Section Eight and reduced their services because of what they were able to achieve. My husband has schizophrenia. Perhaps you've seen Law &amp; Order. It is not at all accurate. He is a strong person. He is a loving husband. He is employed. He is success, a successful freelance artist, and most importantly, he's a wonderful father. I'm sure he is not what you think of when you think of people with mental illness, and perhaps you should increase your compassion. My cousin is disabled and recently moved to Kingston. With affordable housing, he could work more than he's, work less than he's able to, than he has to now in order to make ends meet. He can improve his resources, have access to more like physical therapy, and then perhaps eventually be able to work in something that makes him happy and to contribute more to his community. I can't for the life of me think of why people would be against seniors and veterans because they've dedicated their lives to this country and this community. To not see that helping these people allows them to do better for themselves and therefore improves the community is blind. These people are here. They are your community. The help is, the need for help is great. I wonder if you think it would be preferable to leave them as is in their current situation of struggling, on the street, wandering, or struggling in shelters, or perhaps working tirelessly just to exist, and they are therefore unable to utilize the resources to help themselves. Some are not so fortunate as to be able to pull themselves up by their bootstraps. I hope that those that have been more fortunate can have some compassion for those that are not as strong as they. If we give these people the opportunity to improve themselves, they will improve our city. They could contribute more. That would help our economy. If we give them the opportunity to have safe, affordable, and beautiful housing, because RUPCO does do beautiful work, they can do more. I have worked with at-risk populations, and I know the success that they can achieve. And to view them through a narrow, narrow hole of what you think they only are is just wrong. The lack of compassion for your fellow man is quite frankly disturbing, and I hope that you never face circumstances such as those and face such calllessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Committee Chairman, Committee Chair, my name is David Rao. I live on forty-nine Rentham Street here in Kingston, and I maintained residence at three thirty-one and three forty-three Clifton Avenue most of my life. I'm fifty-eight years old, lived in Kingston my entire life. I'm a fourth-generation Kingstonian. I appreciate the lamentations we've all heard about what the so-called purpose of the old county infirmary building used to be when it was built. My great-grandfather was superintendent in that building, when it was a county, also known as a county poorhouse. It was built in a different time. It was built in a different time, a different, complete different era. I'm not saying anything against the homeless. Everyone needs a leg up. I'm a charitable person, I belong to many charitable organizations, I donate to my church, and I believe people need a leg up. But I also believe and know in my heart that people need a purpose in life, a job, something to do. You people are the leaders of the city of Kingston. This city needs jobs. It needs manufacturing, labor jobs, skilled and non-skilled labor. Give people a reason to live, not just someplace to live for free without any purpose. That is why I'm standing up. I'm not against helping anyone, but make sure it's for the right reason. My parents and I owned the last remaining business on Clifton Avenue. When I was a kid, there were seven businesses operating just on that street, from Flatbush Avenue to Highland Avenue, seven family businesses. We are the last, we're over a hundred years old and struggling to maintain that. What I'd like to know, if you, if there's any documentation, any proof, anything, that we would know, what are the future ramifications, the tax implications to the residents and homeowners of the city if the Alms House is put through? If RUPCO continues with this and its past, can anyone tell me how much the city taxes are gonna go up? Besides struggling to keep a family farm business going, which is next to nonexistent anymore in Ulster County, I also own two body shops. I employ sixteen families, and I'm struggling like the daylights to keep them people employed. I don't want any more of my employees to ever have to go back on welfare of any kind, unemployment, anything. I fight every day to keep sixteen families fed and working at my two shops. If my taxes go up on my two businesses, I'm gonna have to close one or both, I can't afford anymore. The tax structure for business in this town is tremendous, it's terrible. Small business owners are what makes this country grow. I'm involved in three of them, and every day is a fight for it. And without knowing what's coming down the road from this project is what I'm concerned of. And everyone in this room, there's other residents, neighbors here, I grew up with from the time I was born right through, who put their time in when it was the county infirmary. So it's not that they're looking down on anyone, they're struggling to maintain their own homes without any more increase, without knowing where the money's gonna come from for this project. That's why we're against it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that hasn't signed up that would like to address the council at this time?
Thank you, President Noble. I wasn't gonna speak because I've been here many times, but I can't sit and listen to what I think are false accusations. And I have to tell you that in the last few months, freedom of speech has definitely come with a price. God forbid you speak up against something that you really believe in. You get labeled by derogatory marks as nimby, racist, heartless. Now I'm heartless. Because I care about the city of Kingston and the direction the city of Kingston's going in, I care about Ward Six. I live in Ward Seven. I live across the street from the Alms House, okay? Which, by the way, was an Alms House when there were no other houses to help people in the city of Kingston. Nothing. Now Ward Six houses forty-two percent, forty-two percent of all the low-income housing in the city of Kingston. Is that fair? Do you really think that that's conscious development? Do you think that that's fair and equitable to the neighbors? City of Kingston now houses approximately nineteen percent of the entire county's burden. Do you think that's fair for business owners like Dave Rowell? I can tell you that, I decided that I wasn't gonna speak, but I can't sit here and listen to falsehoods like seniors. Let's understand what they classify as senior. I'm fifty-three years old, I'll be fifty-four in September. Seniors are classified as fifty-five, okay? If this was a building for true seniors, there's not a single person from the neighborhood that would be objecting. This is not a building for seniors. This is a low-income or a no-income, it's a homeless center. They talk about veterans. You think that I do not support veterans? My brother Lou served in the military. My father, who passed away last Saturday, was a veteran of World War II and the Korean War. How dare you accuse us that we do not support veterans? It's for veterans other than honorably discharged. Did you hear what I said? Other than honorably discharged. Sure, they might need a home. They might need help, okay? But why does the city of Kingston, and specifically Ward Six, have to continually carry the burden? That's not fair. That's absolutely not fair. So we're here to talk about a point of order, I believe, tonight, because the neighbors and I have a petition before you, and I believe the city charter is gonna require a supermajority vote from this council. That's what we're here to talk about. You can be threatened by RUPCO's attorneys and say they're gonna sue you to frighten you, but your job is to do what's right and what's legal. And I wanna tell you something, I respect every single one of you because I've been through this process with you, and I can't tell you that I don't think you have a harder job. I can tell you that I'm not against RUPCO, they did a fabulous job at the Lace Mill. I'm a large supporter of the O Positive Foundation, and we went there to the Lace Mill, and it's fabulous. It's four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars per unit, but it's fabulous. They're probably gonna do a fabulous job with East Square on Broadway. That neighborhood needs help. We don't need any more help. We need something positive, we need something that generates taxes, and we need something that creates jobs. And it's this council's responsibility to look forward enough so that we become Hudson and not Newburgh. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak before I declare this portion of the meeting closed? One more, okay.
Good evening. I'm Jordan Scruggs. I'm the Associate Pastor and Director of Outreach at St. James United Methodist Church in the city of Kingston. I'm on the Board of Midtown Rising, and I'm a resident of Thirty Van Buren Street in Ward Four. I come to you this evening because a number of my neighbors, who are good people, struggle to make ends meet and find affordable housing. There is a huge affordable housing crisis in this county, and indeed, all over the United States. And like it or not, RUPCO is one of the only organizations in this area that is able to address even a small portion of that issue. So I implore you, whatever the decision is this evening regarding this particular space, we have got to do better by our residents in this city in terms of finding and supplying affordable housing. It's not fair, and it's not right for people to be pushed out. And Hudson is a beautiful place, it's also rapidly gentrifying, which means that people who have lived there for years and years and years can no longer afford to be there. So whatever your qualms with this particular project and whatever your qualms with RUPCO, please, as the council and as leaders of the city of Kingston, help us do something about affordable housing in this area. I personally would like to see RUPCO move forward with this project. I understand that you are required to listen to all the voices in this city, and I wanna be respectful of my fellow brothers and sisters who are in this community. But it is also your obligation as leaders of this city to make sure that the most vulnerable people in our neighborhood are taken care of. Thank you.
Could you just repeat, could you just repeat your name for the record?
Jordan Scruggs, J-O-R-D-A-N, Scruggs, S-C-R-U-G-G-S. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to declare the public speaking portion of the meeting closed. We will now go on with the rest of the agenda. Claims and communications, hearing no discussion, I'll be filing the clerk's office. Can I get a motion, expense with the second reading of the general bills and pay same?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. The bills are paid, nine-zero. We now enter into report of committees. Resolution number one-twenty.
Resolution one-twenty of two thousand seventeen, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the two thousand seventeen Department of Public Works budget.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted, nine-zero. We now go to resolution number one-twenty-one.
Resolution number one-twenty-one of two thousand seventeen, an ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York, adding twenty-minute parking on Smith Avenue.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted, nine-zero. We now go to resolution number one-twenty-two.
Resolution number one-twenty-two of two thousand seventeen, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, designating a portion of Broadway Commons as Deep Listening Plaza in honor of Pauline Oliveros.
On the question, Olomun Dawson.
Mr. President, if I can speak, thank you very much. When we discussed this initially, some of the council members did not know who Ms. Pauline Oliveros was. Here's a picture of her for those that haven't ever seen her. This is an amazing woman, and I think what we're doing here is very, very important. Okay? I have, if I can, if I may, just read something really quickly, just because it was questioned, who is she? What is it about her? Why do they wanna name this space for her? I can just briefly read. Last Thanksgiving Day, November twenty-fourth, Pauline Oliveros, the world-famous composer and performer, passed away at age eighty-four. Pauline was a proud resident of the city of Kingston. For thirty-five years, she left her collaborator and spouse, Carol Ione Lewis, a writer and performance artist known as Ione. Pauline Oliveros founded the Deep Listening Institute and Rondell, and then moved into Midtown Kingston, thank goodness, always remaining active in the city's cultural life. As Ione was quoted in the Daily Freeman as saying, "Pauline loved Kingston and was a guiding light for the arts. She led the way and created a worldwide community of artists who live in Kingston." As was noted in a lengthy obituary in the New York Times, Pauline Oliveros was a composer whose life's work aspired to enhance sensory perception, who avidly adopted cutting-edge technologies, who proposed a totally inclusivity meant to free music from elite specialists and open it up to everyone, regardless of status, experience, or ability. She conceived of deep listening, a practice that, as the Times explained, compelled listening not just to the conventional details of a given musical performance, medley, harmony, rhythm, intonation, but also to sound surrounding that performance, including acoustic space and extra-musical noise. In tribute to Pauline Oliveros, the Arts Commission proposes that the Broadway Commons on Broadway near Henry Street be named the Deep Listening Plaza in honor of Pauline Oliveros. It would be a very fitting tribute for the city that she loved so much. It would also be one of the few spaces in the city named in honor of a prominent local resident who was a woman. It is the fervent wish of the Arts Commission that this honor be bestowed on Pauline by the city at this time when her life and contributions are still fresh and vivid. In the two thousand thirteen policy for the naming of city property, there is a list of criteria for qualifying such an honor, and includes six possibilities. The first four as follows: Has a longstanding local or community identification with city residents. Made substantial contributions to the advancement or to the betterment of a specific area of the city, or the city as a whole. It is associated to an economic development or redevelopment activity in an area that benefits the city. Had a positive impact on the lives of the city residents. Pauline Oliveros, a giant of contemporary music, a woman of extraordinary achievements, and proud Kingston residents, meets all of the above criteria. And I'm very, very proud to have taken the time to give her that explanation to those that don't know her, that don't know what the meaning behind the Deep Listening Space is. And I'm really, really proud that she settled in Kingston, not just Midtown, but in Kingston because she could've gone anywhere in the world. Thank you. So I'm definitely proud of her.
Is there anyone else on the question? Olomun Carey?
Yes, thank you. I never met Pauline, and it sounds like that's unfortunate. But I wanna speak and thank the Kingston Arts Commission for what they've done. When they came as a group to form this commission a year or two ago, it goes so fast, maybe over a year, but not that long ago, the energy they brought to Kingston and to the arts community was phenomenal. And I'm just, I'm very grateful for that commission. And to me, something like this goes a long way because even though they've been together only a short period of time, they recognize the importance of tradition and honoring and establishing, establishing traditions that'll help better Kingston. And I think things like this go along. Again, I just wanna thank them for their dedication and the energy that they bring to Kingston. Thank you, whoever's here.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Before I call for the vote, seeing no one else, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted, nine-zero. We now move on to resolution number one-twenty-three.
Resolution number one-twenty-three of two thousand seventeen, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Mobility LLC.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Opposed. One opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight-one. Now move on to resolution number one-twenty-four.
Resolution number one-twenty-four of two thousand seventeen, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the establishment of a working group to review in depth the report prepared by C.T. Mail Associates for the cost to repair the central fire station elevated floor system.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted, nine-zero. Now move on to resolution number one-twenty-five.
Resolution number one-twenty-five of two thousand seventeen, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the transfer of funds for the purpose of progressing work for laser scanning of the Broadway corridor, Kingston High School Loop, and Uptown Stockade area.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted, nine-zero. Now move on to resolution number one-twenty-six.
Resolution one-twenty-six of two thousand seventeen, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the City of Kingston Common Council to act as lead agency for the purposes of environmental determination and authorizing the mayor to apply for funding under the New York State EFC WQUIP Grant Program.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted, nine-zero. We now move on to resolution number one-twenty-seven.
Resolution one-twenty-seven of two thousand seventeen, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing adopting a bond ordinance in the sum of one million, one hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the construction and associated contract administration and inspection by Clerk Patterson Lee for the grout removal within the Washington Avenue Tunnel Sanitary Sewer, and authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a contract with Arald Construction.
On the question?
Mr. President?
Olomun Mills?
I would just like to state that on this resolution and bond, I will be a no vote this evening. Not that I don't believe that Washington Avenue needs to be fixed and needs to be fixed, right? But I think the contractors and people need to take accountability for mistakes they may have made. And I believe, my question last night, I didn't get complete answers to that, and I will revisit this at some point, because I'm sure we will have Washington Avenue come to us once again. But I think we need to do our due diligence as a council and find out why contractors are not accountable. are not accountable and why we continue to put millions of dollars, close to 10 millions of dollars, into this sinkhole. Thank you.
Alderman Childress.
I'm afraid I have to disagree with what the elder woman just said. We are in fact going to look into all possibilities here, but we have to be patient, we have to do it the right way, and we have to do it in a way that will actually achieve results. If we go too fast, we end up screwing things up and we don't get what we deserve.
Thank you. Alderman Dawson.
Mr. President, I'd like to agree with Mr. Childress. I understand Mary Ann's reasoning because we should make the original contractor accountable, but we need to be careful and tactful in how we do that. So I believe that the residents of that area should not be put in a position where we don't move forward with this, which was the original reason why we put money into it in the first place. We're trying to correct this issue. So I believe we should move forward and the other will fall in its place. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Hearing no one else, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 8-1. We now move on to resolution bond ordinance number 128. Long roll.
Resolution number 128 of 2017, bond ordinance dated July 11th, 2017, an ordinance authorizing the Washington Avenue Tunnel grout removal and sanitary sewer relining project in and for the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $1,250,000 and authorizing the issuance of $1,100,000 bonds of said city to pay the costs thereof. Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Mills.
Yes.
Alderman Shabbitt.
Yes.
Alderman Brown.
Yes.
Alderman Eckert.
Aye.
Alderman Coop.
Yes.
Alderman Scott Childress.
Aye.
Alderman Dawson.
Yes.
Alderman Carey.
Is everybody?
Yep. 8-1.
The resolution bond ordinance is adopted, 8-1. We now move on to resolution number 129.
Resolution number 129 of 2017, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation for a heritage area grant in the amount of $200,000 to pave the trail to the AVR Promenade as part of the Empire State Trail.
On the question, hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move on to resolution number 130.
Resolution number 130 has been withdrawn by the committee on the request of the mayor.
Now move on to resolution number 131.
Resolution number 131 of 2017, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for a Climate Smart Communities Grant Program Certification Grant in the amount of $100,000 to develop an organics collection plan for the city of Kingston.
On the question, hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move to resolution number 132.
Resolution number 132 of 2017, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Department of State for a local waterfront revitalization program grant in the amount of $1,700,000 to construct the shoreline stabilization project in the waterfront resiliency design.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move to resolution number 133.
Resolution number 133 of 2017, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, supporting a memorializing resolution for a RUPCO grant for revitalization of the Midtown Greenkill Target area.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move on to resolution number 134.
Resolution number 134 of 2017, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, supporting a memorializing resolution for a transart grant for the Burger Matthews House, 105 to 107 Henry Street.
On the question, Alderman Childress and then Alderman Dawson.
Having served on the board of the organization, I recuse myself from this vote.
Okay, Alderman Dawson.
Mr. President, I'm very happy to say that I'm definitely going to be for this because we've been around the block many times about this particular property and I'm very happy to say that I see positive movement and even positive people on the board, if I must say. So I'd like to say that this is going forward in a positive way. Happy about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question before I call for the vote? Hearing no one, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 8 in favor, 1 recuses. Now move on to resolution number 135.
Resolution number 135 of 2017, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for a Climate Smart Communities Protection Fund Grant in the amount of $750,000 to rehabilitate sidewalks for ADA accessibility in Midtown Kingston.
On the question.
President Noble.
Alderman Mills.
Just last night during caucus, we inquired as to where the ADA accessibility would be for this. And just for the record, it would be on Franklin Street in accordance with the Henry Street Project as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move on to resolution number 136.
Resolution number 136 of 2017, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the State of New York Main Street Program administered by the Office of Community Renewal under the direction of the New York State Housing Trust Fund for up to $500,000 for renovation of city-owned mixed-use properties in Midtown Kingston.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move on to resolution number 137.
Resolution number 137 of 2017, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation for a park program grant in the amount of $500,000 to make improvements in ADA accessibility and the amenities at Kingston Point Park.
President Noble.
On the question, Alderman Mills.
Once again, last night, it was asked at caucus for the ADA accessibility and the anemones that were going to be rendered at Kingston Point Park should the grant be approved and granted to the city of Kingston. The mayor informed us today through an email that it would be for the softball field, the bathroom facilities, the beach, and the parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now go to resolution number 138.
Resolution number 138 of 2017, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Environmental Facilities Corp. for a green innovation grant program for up to $2 million to incorporate green infrastructure into the rehabilitation of parking lots in Midtown Kingston.
On the question, hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.